Typically, they're all the same today.
Not really.
So, contrary to that.
Pretty exciting.
I think so.
Mandy, would you take a roll call, please?
Matt, Audi.
Here.
Charlene Abel. Bob Richard.
Here.
Robert Peterson.
Yep.
Kent Miller.
Here.
Rick Brown.
Here.
Tony Ginkler.
Yes.
Lloyd Latrell.
Time.
Thank you. Yes, and let me for the invocation of the Lord's name. And the Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you continue to bestow upon our community. We thank you for the safe trip that our youth and our community had to Dodge City and the success that you allowed them to have. And we know it was done in your name. That we are so proud of our youth at both of our schools. They represent us so well. And we are so proud on how you lead our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Again, I'd like to recognize St. John's for their girls for their state championship and the boys for their run out. They've had quite a run. It's really proud to see that. And the girls' team at Beloit High, as they advance to the state, you know, just making theirs quite a feat. And our boys almost made it. But we've had a lot of success this winter with all the youth and their academics and their athletics. And it's just kind of fun to stand back and be proud to be from Beloit and for Beloit. Because, you know, as we talk about, they are our ambassadors out there. And people watch what our youth do. And that's because we have a lot of good parents. So, I just want to just keep building.
You might mention Mr. Westling got third place.
Well, that's right. Carter got third place at the state wrestling tournament. And he went up against some pretty tough kids and almost made it into the finals. So, again, you know, we have a lot of success. And we build off of that. So, Lloyd, do you have anything in this time?
Just second what you said.
Matt?
I was just going to say we've got a couple of events going on this weekend. I know there's the Home and Farm Show here from the municipal building on Saturday. And I think there's also a poker tournament fundraiser for American Asian Ballfields to get new dugouts. So, a lot of stuff going on this weekend.
Good projects.
Lions Club had a real good turnout at their convention. They beat them a couple of weekends ago. They should have been for the kids' baseball program.
Oh, that's good. They have a lot of participants in that throughout the summer. It's nice to see those ballfields busy. Mr. Brown?
No, not this time.
I just want to echo your sentiments about sports teams. The last two years, we've had a lot of people out there. It's very good.
It's ongoing. Tony?
Nothing other than Mr. Peterson fed me a good breakfast Sunday. Thank you.
You're a good cook, isn't he?
Yes, he is.
Bob, do you have anything in this time?
Well, since you mentioned that, we get sort of almost 600 people there. So, we brought quite a few people from out of town in. We enjoy doing it. It's kind of a fun thing. We get down there and have a lot of chat together, buzz each other a little bit.
Well, I think the people who come have a lot of good time too. Thank you. Katie, do you have anything in this time?
No, not right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn?
I do, but I'll wait till a work session.
Okay. We have a public comment this evening. So, the next item on the consent agenda is the April 3rd council meeting minutes and appropriations 3B.
Comer Mayor, I would like to ask the question. I was looking at some of these expenditures. And I consider in this, on the last page here, 1213, where it says down here that lots of cement saw blades for $338. I don't, I'm not complaining about saw blades. I'm complaining about where it's at. It's 300. And that's in capital improvement. And saw blade's not a capital improvement. Because September, we passed a deal with a portable saw blade. There's portable saw with saw blade on it. Costs $25 to rent it out, plus employee. So, I think it ought to be put in the bracket where it needs to go in the department. And they let them budget for it.
What things was you on again?
Page 1213. Down about the middle of the page.
Okay.
And before we okay this, I would like to have that put in the right bracket.
Where's it supposed to be under?
Well, I don't know who bought saw blade.
Mike?
Yes, that's Transportation Department. Those saw blades were bought for the North Campus. The storm boxes that we bought from Old Castle, they sent them up and they were on. And to keep from having to rebuild some new ones, we worked a deal out with Old Castle. We're going to get reimbursed for those. We had to saw the boxes down to size. And that's where those blades were used. And we are going to invoice them.
I appreciate that you're going to get reimbursed. But I think it could come out of your department. They didn't get your department reimbursed for it instead of capital improvement. The understanding I had a few council meetings ago, we're trying to get that capital improvement built up. So, when we do think about East Main or maybe have about up there on North Campus, that we like, hopefully it's in savings or something where we can draw a little bit of anything.
Typically, we use that fund for our concrete that we pour and everything up.
I understand. That's improvement.
Okay.
But saw blades are equipped.
Well, yeah, but isn't it being used on the North Campus, which is what we're dedicating that capital improvement fund for developing the North Campus? That's the way I understand it.
But that still?
But we get reimbursed and it'll go back into that fund. So, it's a wash.
Well, the only thing, we're taking away the interest out of that fund. Same way with this over on the last page. Pool shade structure daily, 3,000 and something. It's coming out of there. We already paid for it, one thousand capital improvement.
That's actually, that's going to be reimbursed through the insurance premiums that was a loss last year. So, that's how we're tracking that. So, we're going to get reimbursed by the...
I think it'll be putting improved, or the pool fund or whatever, and then have it taken out of there and leave our capital improvement alone, only when we need it.
So, walk me through that again. Mandy, on what fund that's taken out of? And then the reimbursement will go right back into that fund, yeah? So, again, it's just a wash.
Yes.
So, there's no effect on it other than the... Have we received that refund then from the insurance company?
Not yet, not on that.
Okay. And that'll be reimbursed then, I'm assuming, once that bill is submitted to the insurance?
Actually, they did last year. I'm thinking it was around October. I can't remember which month it was. But they already actually paid us for it. And that's, we took, we put that money into the CIP fund.
Okay, so it's already there.
Then after the project is done, then we get our depreciable...
The whole background.
The whole, the whole rest of it. And that's, that was the easiest way to track it. Because it happened in 2014 and now we're in 2015.
Okay.
Thank you. I make motion to approve this agenda.
Okay, second one. It's been moved by Councilman Peterson that we approve the consent agenda. And appropriations 3B. Do I have a second? Second by Councilman Miller. Any discussion? Mandy, would you take a roll call, please?
Brown?
Here.
Ginkler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Audi?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, since there's no evidence of the resolutions, is formal action. And the first item on there is the demolition bid for the CDVG housing demolition grant. And it's been requested that we reject all the demolition bids submitted on 3/13/2015 and revend the project. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
It's been moved by Councilman Brown that we reject all demolition bids. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Second by Councilman Richards. Any further discussion? No further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the contract with Alfred Bennington Company for engineering services for the airport agreement for the amount of $246,346. Is there questions for staff? Or I think we have a representative here, I think Brad's here, from Bennington Company, if there's some question?
So, we get 90% of this back?
Correct. Matt, you have a question?
My question is, we're confident that the FAA's got to pay their portion and they're not being sequestered.
Brad, no?
Yeah, we're just in the middle of this.
This, well, let's put it this way. The approval of this contract will be contingent upon FAA funding. That ought to probably record in your minutes, assuming you put a motion forward to pass. In the next probably two months, we will be advertising bidding this project that we've been designing for the last probably two years. It's got an estimated construction budget of, I believe, about 2.6 million. And it's something we've been working on for years to get to this point. Once that project is bid and hopefully successfully bid, the contractor, a good price, all that, we will submit a grant application that will include this amount in it. And that will all go to FAA. And the award of said contract to the contractor is also contingent upon FAA approval, FAA funding. So, once that's submitted, we'll wait, hopefully a month or so. Hopefully, the money back will go and start construction immediately. So, the hope is to start construction and complete construction this calendar year. And that entire amount is 90% eligible reimbursement. The reason that this is here now is because we do have some bidding services at the very front, which is to get the project bid that was not included in the previous contract. And that's $6,000.
Any other questions?
If everything goes the way we hoped it would, which is probably out of consideration. But when might this project, when's the earliest this project can be started?
Right now, I'm waiting on FAA to get the comments back on, I don't know my plans. And I can't bid until then. If they can get me something back this week, I'm bugging them to do so. We're trying to advertise, I'm hoping by within the next month. Hopefully, bid it in early May, get a grant submitted first of June, which is the FAA's deadline. If that's the case, they should have funded. This is one of four large projects in Kansas that's got funding. Quite honestly, if we had been working on this for the last five years, this probably would not be up and running right now. That's how tight they are. We've been given the 2.6 million plus or minus as in the goal letter. This is what you have. It's not entitled funding, it's discretionary. But they remarked this effort for this project because of what we've done to get to this point. So, it's there with all the government cuts and everything, their budget being shortened and all that, it's there. The problem with the timing is, when I say it's there, it's not like it's sitting in a bank account. It's got to be released by Congress, FAA, at whatever point that happens, June, July, August, whenever. And then from then, it's a matter of getting the contractor to let's go. The biggest concern is it may delay long enough to where we can't start till maybe September 1st. And if that's the case, we will face the option, it's about a six-month construction period, five or six months. Whether we try and start and do half of it and finish in the spring, if there's a shutdown, or we just wait till next year and completely do it.
How will that have any effect on the use of the airport?
This project, once it's started, will completely shut the runway down. I tell you, there's a small phase up front where we'll stay open. But in effect, we are widening the runway and we're lengthening the runway. And unfortunately, unlike a roadway project where you can divert traffic to one lane or, you know, short lanes or whatever, once you start and shut it down, it's down.
So, hopefully you can get started on this in June if not.
Yes. And if there is a winter shutdown, that has to happen, then that runway will be up and running. One way or another, it will happen.
Okay, so if it's...
Yeah, this site can't be shut down for nine months out of the year. Ten months, one month, whatever it might be.
If you go halfway through, it would still be shut down. But if it's not finished, you can reopen.
No, if it gets to the point where we want us, where we think that may be an option, we will maybe readjust phasing to do the widening only and the new lives. And then leave it as such, so they don't come back then, maybe in the spring and do the extension. Or some vice versa.
Will the cross runway be shut down also?
Both cross and one is what we made up at all times. So, the primary runway will be shut down.
So, a couple of egg businesses out there?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so hopefully, I'll be back in the near future, for the next two or three months or less. But I'll be back to you in front with hopefully a bid that we recommend a contractor. So, we'll put it back down in that top box.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Matt?
Comer Mayor, I move we approve the attached contract contingent on FAA 9% involvement.
Moved by Councilman Audi that we approve the contract with Alfred Bennington Company for the $246,346.
Contested on the FAA.
Depending on FAA approval and funding. Do I have a second? Second by Councilman Latrell. Any further discussion? No further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the rock hanger repair bid. And the amount of $8,665 was still well masonryed. Lloyd, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was wondering, who actually did the bid?
Travis did.
Did he follow the city bid guidelines?
Yeah.
Doesn't even know what they are.
He does, yeah, and he's done this before.
I'm wondering because we only have one.
You only have one.
And no indication even asked for a bid from anybody else.
He did, but that's the only one he got back, was from Stillwell. I think the one was in the area that actually did that kind of work.
I move we approve the bid on the hanger project.
Clear.
It's been moved by Councilman Miller that we approve the hanger project was still well masonryed in the amount of $8,665 and was seconded by Councilman Brown. Any further discussion? No further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the outsourcing of printing and mailing of utility bills. Nope, excuse me, I got one ahead of us. Uniform shirt bid with action keys in the amount of $6,240.
I have a question. What do we spend in a year on uniforms? This doesn't include pants, this is only shirts, right?
Yeah.
Right, those are separate. Yeah, we got an allowance for those. It's per employee, 150 for the boots. I forget what it is for the pants.
It's 100.
100?
Yeah.
Is this 150 for every employee?
People who buy boots.
That's, that's pretty standard.
We raised that.
With all companies. Well, I have a problem with the price. I have a problem with buying everybody boots. I don't know. I've worked for a lot of places, but nobody bought my boots.
We buy boots. Lloyd, do you have a question?
I do. Getting back to that, we changed it last year. I still don't think I have an answer on how that got changed. Is that, was that your discretion?
Yeah, I just...
And how did it get set to start with? Was it an ordinance or a resolution or a good price?
I don't know. I don't know if that was true. But yeah, I mean, it's been 75, I think, or 90, I think it was 90 for a long time. And I don't know if that was set by any action by anybody.
I never could find anything on that.
So, I don't know how they got to that point or whether everybody had been that way for a long time. So, yeah, we raised that to 150 and I think it's 100 for the pants. So, we used to bid the pants, but that's hard to do for people of all different shapes and sizes.
So, how much basically does each employee get for a uniform?
Well, it'd be 100 for the pants and for the shirts, what that breaks down to per...
So, 100 per employee?
Yeah, for the pants. And 150 for the boots. And whatever this works out to per...
About $100.
Yeah, you get, yeah, you get 60. You get 60 people, yeah.
So, about shirts?
Well, that's, that's...
That's in that.
Yeah. So, it would work out to be about the same. You get about 60 employees. So, it would work out about the same.
Do the, the office staff now, are they being treated fair on this? If they just get a shirt? No high heels or...
No, and no boots. Yeah, yeah. Not that kind of...
They're the ones that need boots.
Are the boots that we buy, are they like safety boots, steel toe? Is that what they are? Not, not everybody uses steel toe. Or just like shoes? The electric people can't use steel toe. I just figured.
Well, that, that was my question. I mean, I can totally see in the electric department or like they're down in the trenches, they need special lower shoes and all that.
I can help you out a little bit. But that, as employees, we gave up a raise one year just to get the uniforms.
The uniform, that's right.
So, it would have been extra money in payroll for all these years instead of the uniforms.
So, you should give up the raise every year?
Because a raise goes on forever.
That's right.
All this, before you get yourself into more trouble. So, do we approve the uniform bid from Action?
Do we have a second? Okay, you have a second. It's been moved by Councilman Miller that we approve the bid from Action keys in the amount of $6,240 and was seconded by Councilman Audi. Any further discussion? I like the looks of the uniforms. I think it looks nice, so you kind of know the...
Well, I don't, I think, I think we're relevant lessons of what should be... Most of our larger and full-ways do furnish.
Looks nice. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries. Next item is the outsourcing of the utility bill printing and mailing with bill size. Approximately savings, utility bills of $4,500 per year in house savings. Questions, comments for staff?
I think it's great to see somebody take this initiative.
You have a couple. One of them, I couldn't figure out how the pricing on the mailing that we do could cost 46 cents a page.
We have to buy a bulk just for the utility bills. We have a bulk rate just for those. And we can get it 46 cents.
So, it would be cheaper to put stamps on them? Because it's only 39 cents per stamp.
It's 40, it's like 48.
It's 49.
Yeah, it's 49 now.
But still, it costs 6 cents more to do bulk. I would have thought that that option should have been cheaper.
A regular stamp is 49 cents. So, you're saving 3 cents.
You're saving 3 cents on the bulk.
What are we doing with the saved man-hours? I assume that there's a lot of man-hours going into the $4,500, which is...
If everything goes correct, you're right. If everything goes correctly, it'll take two days to calculate bills, print them, stuff them, and do all that good stuff. But it's mainly, I wanted to go after collections.
Oh, so we're going to have a greater emphasis on collections and that.
You know, and also, along with collections is having a good, really good filing system. Like, we'll meet there. When people come in, they're contracts, signing up for utilities. And we can scan that in. And then now we have the capabilities of attaching it to each customer account. And so, a great deal of time will be spent doing that. Going back on old ones too. And that'll help collections. It'll make it go faster.
Mandy, you had in your letter there that you feel that her time would be better spent working on collecting bad debt. Proactive duties. Is there any way that we could get a printout as far as, I don't need names, but I was wondering as far as past due announced?
Yeah. I can get that.
You know, and then what, you know, that way we could see if that is...
Now, some of them are too old to collect on, so...
I understand.
But I still keep them on there because we have found that 25% of the time, they come back to Beloit. And we make them pay in full before they can have utilities.
I mean, if that would be, I mean, that's something I, you know, see...
And we just have now gotten the ball started. Because it does take a... And we just have now gotten the ball started, because it does take a great deal of time and, to get that started, to get the collection started, because the timings on it, it's very time consuming for even one person.
Right.
And the, really, the only ones that we have a hard time with are the final bill people who never paid the final bill. A lot of times you will find it's about two months worth of the utilities on there, and, and they're gone, they're, can't find them anymore.
I mean, I'm not saying that, but, you know, but if down the road.
And I think she's, she can set off.
Yeah, we're doing a combination of sending them off to collections or the Kansas set off program, so we're, we're trying to do both.
Is there any particular point in time to where, if they're not collectible, you just write them off at that at expense?
Um, after three years, we can't collect off.